Thank you for joining us this morning for our city council meeting. Shawnee, could you please call the roll?
Bates?
Here.
Cheetham?
Here.
Lurick?
Here.
Mangum?
Here.
Nichols?
Here.
Paulson?
Here.
Here, thank you. Before we get going, I don't want to think anybody's mad at anybody, but I'm gonna have to get up and leave about quarter after ten. I've got some doctor's appointments that I've gotta get to, and I will try to get back. But when I leave, Council President Lurick will take the meeting over until I can get back, if I could do that. With that, we'll move to agenda item number two is a community garden proposal. Representative of Portnivale Partners will be present to discuss a potential to begin a community garden.
Good morning, Mayor and Council, Anne Butler, Parks and Recreation Director. I have a couple of friends up here with me today. I'm gonna pass the time to them and let them introduce themselves and start talking, and then maybe I'll jump in towards the end.
Okay. I'm Brittany Hobson, and I am part of Portnivale Partners, and we are, we have a committee of Mark Dahlquist, but he's not available today, and-
Carl Pettit.
Carl Pettit. So we wanted to come and present this plan to you guys, so thank you for taking the time to allow us to come and talk to you about this. So we'll just jump in and-
Yeah.
Okay, so, the purpose and power of the community garden in our city. So I wanted to give you a little bit of history. You probably know a lot of the history already, but community gardens have been around since the early 1900s, starting with World War I, as named as liberty gardens. Then in the 30s, during the Depression, they created gardens, relief gardens, for people at that time. And then in the 1940s, they were named victory gardens for World War II. And the country, the government really encouraged these gardens at that time. And by 1944, there was over 20,000 victory gardens, no, 20 million victory gardens, producing 44% of the fresh vegetables in the United States. So I thought that was pretty amazing to hear that, that this country rallied around these gardens to help people with the need for food at that time. These are my grandparents. I just wanted to add this because during that time, he was in the South Pacific and she was in Boise, and she wrote this letter to him saying, "All the boys and gals in Boise are dinging up the vacant lots all over town and planting victory gardens. This rationing makes them grow their own food if they want to eat as they are accustomed." And then in the 1970s, it changed to urban community gardens, reemerging as the grassroots effort to reclaim vacant lots and build neighborhood connections. And then today, thousands of US cities have successful community gardens. Today also, in Treasure Valley, so Boise area started in 2020, community gardens, they didn't have any at the time before that, before COVID. They now have 40 community gardens. Twin Falls has 14 community gardens. They got a grant through Blue Cross, and they helped with University of Idaho to build 14 community gardens with just that one grant that they had. Idaho Falls has three community gardens, and they have had these for over 30 years. And we, Carl and I went up there and toured all three of those gardens, and it's, they were pretty amazing.
Pretty amazing.
Blackfoot has one, and I think it's pretty recent that they started that one. The purpose of community gardens, they provide affordable fresh food or produce for families and individuals, especially in areas with limited grocery access. And then they offer hands-on learning for children and adults about nutrition, sustainability, and the environment. And gardening promotes physical activity and mental well-being. And vacant or underused land becomes a thriving green community space. And gardens bring together people of all ages and backgrounds, fostering cooperation, volunteerism, and civic pride. The organization and management of the community garden, our proposed structure ensures accountability, organization, and sustainability, a collaboration between Pocatello Parks and Recreation Department and Portnivale Partners. The city provides the land, Portnivale Partners manages the site, and subleases individual plots to residents for their personal gardens. Also, in addition to individual plots, a shared cooperative area will be maintained for anyone to participate in growing fruits, vegetables, and flowers for local food banks or community use. The garden will be pesticide-free and follow organic growing practices. A volunteer committee will oversee maintenance, events, and adherence to rules and bylaws to ensure fairness and order. And then the goals and priorities from the city comprehensive plan that is already in place says, "To enable and encourage the development of community gardens to support community gathering spaces, urban agriculture, opportunities for residents to obtain food security, neighborhood beautification, education opportunities to learn how food is grown and to grow your own food." Why our area needs community gardens. Gardens help offset grocery expenses for families, education opportunities to learn how food is grown and to grow your own food, and transforming unused lots improves the look and the feel of our neighborhoods. In a time of social disconnection, gardens offer a welcoming, safe, and positive gathering space. And gardens promote composting, pollinator habitats, and local biodiversity. This is our number-one location that we wanted to present today, and this is, you guys, the city just bought this land recently, and it's right by the water department, and then it's where the Green Belt is, the walking path right next to that, and Arthur. And we were just, I mean, starting out, we're looking at not, probably not even using an acre of this land. But then we do have, so there's two other places, but this is our number-one. This is where we really would like to see the garden, because we feel like it's in a really great location for people that might want to use it. There's low-income housing that's not far from there. It's kind of offset, so it's not, it's in an area that is, needs beautification, and it's just weeds right now. There's, and I, and we also are, as a city, trying to beautify just that whole Portniv Greenway area too, and we feel like that would be a great addition to that. The other location is just off of Gaffey Drive, so it's just on the other side of the river. It's, there's a huge area over there that is right by the trailer parks, and just off, it's pretty close to Arthur also, where it comes in. And then, and these are just the two areas that shows together, they're kind of, they're pretty close to each other. And then one other location that we were talking about was O.K. Ward Park, but the thing that we, we kind of shifted to this area is because O.K. Ward Park already, we feel like is pretty. So one of our goals is to beautify an area, and so these areas, we feel like are, kind of fits that purpose that we, we want to see. The benefits to the city. By supporting community gardens, the city demonstrates leadership in sustainability and public health, improved public spaces with minimal maintenance costs, increased civic engagement through resident participation, education opportunities for schools, youth groups, and community organizations, and reduce waste, improve soil, and stronger local ecosystems. So we are asking the city council to approve the use of the city land for designated community garden spaces, authorize a partnership with, a partnership agreement with Portnivale Partners to manage operations, support modest startup resources such as access to water, soil, and fencing to help the garden succeed in its first year. With your support, we can grow something truly special, not just vegetables and flowers, but a stronger, healthier, and more connected community. So now, at this time, we would love questions, and we'll try to answer them as best we can through.
So before we jump into the council, I'm gonna, because I'm gonna have to leave here, Pocatello has a community garden over in the Centennial Park, is that correct?
They did. The gal that was running that ended up pulling that out last year, she was a teenager at the time, and now she's in college and more professional, and she just said it wasn't, wasn't needing her time restriction, so I know that those raised beds, it was time to either replace them or pull them out, and she chose to pull them out.
Do we know how successful that was?
She said it was difficult. I don't know that she'd advertised it overly well. It was really just kind of for the neighborhood, right in that area. I haven't had any calls about it either way, you know, people missing it or wanting to advocate for more. Alexis is her name. She has met with you guys as well, because she did hope to, in the future, have another one open. She didn't know if Constitution would be the best location for that or not, but I know she has been meeting with them as well.
Okay, and then, real quick, the water at these two locations that we've got, do we have water there, or is that water, so, I think the ask was for the city to bring water, soil, and fencing?
So I don't have any extra fencing. I don't have that type of amended soil. We don't keep that type of soil, because it's not used in our parks. And I don't, they would, there would have to be a water tap there, approximately $5,500. That is not something currently in our budget, but it would require some irrigation work. I brought, I'll tell you guys, I brought this to you now for two reasons. One, the use agreement is different than any other one you will see, because normally there's a lease agreement that says you go. This one would actually say you can now sell the plots seasonally to patrons, which is very different from any other agreement that we've had. I've spoken with legal, they know there's a way to do it, other cities do it, so they're comfortable with that part of the agreement. The other piece of this is, Portnivale Partners has a great reputation for making improvements to our community and then leaving them for us. This is a project that I wouldn't recommend doing that. The department cannot support this type of project without more staffing and more money. This is a project they would, in essence, run, and we would say, "Here you go." And so I wanted to be clear about that, and Portnivale Partners is eyes wide open, they know that that is the scenario. But in the spring, when gardens go in, all of our parks go online, Ross Park Aquatics Complex needs open, the cemetery needs to look good, the splash pad needs on, we don't have the manpower to also put in a garden. And so this is something that they will have to spearhead and take care of. I do like the location there, next to the water shop. My goal in the future for that property was just merely a parking lot for Sacagawea on the other side. There's plenty of ground there to do both. And I think it also helps them with, as this grows, they would have a parking lot as well. Right now, you can park on the street, they could potentially park in the water department parking lot in the evenings. I think it's a great location, but I did want you guys to understand kind of the reasons why I brought this forward.
Okay, so I've got, I think Brent, then Council President Lurick, and Council Member Bates.
And Mayor, I have about five questions, do you mind if I just-
You just ask all five? I really don't care, because I'm gonna have to leave right now, so ask 20, as far as I'm concerned.
Go ball in the barrel.
Hopefully I will, hopefully I'll be back.
I'll just go with him. Okay.
So, maybe Anne, maybe you can answer this best. What would the cost and other responsibilities of the city be?
Like I just said, I foresee probably, on our part, if they put in a tap in the irrigation system, our department could probably tolerate the water usage. Really, that's the component that I see that would be ours, just like watering our parks, it would be pretty similar in fashion, but the infrastructure of that irrigation system, they would have to do, which was part of the reason I like this location over others, is right now, we do overhead watering, and a drip system is ideal for this type of garden system. And they're aware of that.
So the city providing the real estate and maybe paying for the water itself, is all you would really envision?
Yes. I do think they need to have the tap and the irrigation work done. We can't do that, but we can pay for the water usage after.
Okay, great.
Well, that's part of the cost of the 30, if it's $30 a person per plot, those costs go toward the utility costs of the city. So we would be willing, obviously, to pay that water bill, that wouldn't be on the city as much. We try to find a grant to do the water tap as well.
And that was one of my questions, how much does a sublease cost, about 30 bucks?
That's our tentative goal, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
All right, so, the Portnivale Partners, what kind of an entity is that? Is it like a registered nonprofit corporation? I mean, is it an entity that would, under Idaho's law, that we would be contracting with?
Correct.
Yes.
Yes, we are.
And it's already established, we have been helping, the whole purpose of Portnivale Partners is to beautify, the beautification of the Gate City area.
Right, and you have all the typical insurances and stuff like that?
Correct.
And we, and in our, we do have an agreement that we've written up, and bylaws and rules for the garden that is provided, if you guys would like that, we have copies for you to look through, and in there, that does, we did talk about liability and the insurance, we would have that through Portnivale Partners.
All right, perfect. And you're only interested in doing one?
At this point, we, we have a bigger goal, but right now, this is just, we want to do one. We want to make sure that this is successful first, before we move on to, if we do another one. But we really have talked about long-term, and we do, we would like to have multiple throughout the area. Chubbuck has already reached out to us, the city of Chubbuck, they have it on their long-term plan for a community garden, they would like us to do one there too. But we picked Pocatello, because we felt like Anne has been really great to work with us at this point. There's been some changes in the city of Chubbuck that we felt like, let's wait a little bit with them and see how it goes with this one first.
All right, and last question, how many plots would you expect on your first?
So when we mapped out, so this kind of, since we've shifted, we haven't went and really like measured out what we want, but at first, we were looking at just about a half an acre over at O.K. Ward Park, and do you remember how many?
I think we had 30 plots on, 30 plots on that particular one, I'm just trying to do it.
And then having an area that was also kind of a shared garden area that we had, that I talked about in this presentation too.
Great, thank you very much.
I remember I was after you, but who else had?
Me.
Dakota was next, okay. I'll just ask mine real quick, Anne, I think it's more for you, but the preferred piece of land next to the water department, that sounds really good to me too. I like the idea of going there rather than in one of our parks. Our parks are, they're wonderful, they're getting fuller and fuller, and especially O.K. Ward, Caldwell, there's a few that we're just getting more and more stuff in, which can be good, but also, it sort of seems to encroach on the, you know, purpose of being a park. So I like that this is a little bit separate, and I think the location is good for this kind of thing, but I was curious about, do we have the okay, I guess it is, for this, to use this particular land for this? Is there any other-
This property is city-owned. We just purchased it, I think in the spring with ARPA funding. I did reach out with Hannah yesterday, just because she and I had talked about this property to see, I wanted to make sure she didn't have any other thoughts on it. She said no, we were on the same page about the parking lot, but like you said, there's plenty of ground here to do both. Even if the city needed to put in some storage or something like that in the future, I think there's room to do both here.
And that was really where I was going, I mean, I know it's city-owned, but I was thinking other departments looking at it for other purposes. We know there's no-
None that I'm aware of.
No conflict there, okay. I think that, I like this location a lot. Every city I've lived in has always had community gardens, and, I mean, they're wonderful. That's a big part of sort of urban life that I've always thought is a really good thing, so I think it's a great direction for us to go in. And Dakota is next.
Thank you. I have just a few questions, if that's okay, Council President. I guess to tag along with what Linda was asking, why did we buy this property?
You know, I'm probably not the right staff member to answer that question. The ARPA projects, there was some property, money allocated to buy properties. Hannah Singer's probably the best contact for that, on the properties that she located.
Okay. I just want to make sure, like, it's, it's clear, because it hasn't, I, I'm not clear on cost. So, one, staff commitment, zero commitment from Park's staff.
I'm envisioning on occasion, we'll haul over some wood chips for their pathways or some cardboard, but yeah, they're committed to put in the infrastructure and run this community garden.
Okay. And then you mentioned $5,500 to get water to the, is Portnivale Partners responsible for that? Is the city paying for that? What is, have we talked about that?
I'll jump in, we'll, we'll get a grant for that. We'll get that funded.
Okay.
We don't want the city to really be on the hook.
Yeah, and he's, I mean, we have great people on our committee that have done a lot of grant writing, so we are prepared to do that.
Yeah, that was another one of my questions, because you mentioned, I think, Twin Falls has received grants. Do you know of grants? Are you actively looking to apply for grants?
There's quite a few grants that are out there for these kinds of projects specifically. We haven't pursued them here, just because we have nowhere to put them yet, but every, I would say probably every two or three months across my desk, I get several grants that say, "Hey, we want to promote this, would you be willing to fund that?" So there's funds out there. And they've got funds right here in Pocatello, I think that we could access as well, through different foundations as well.
Okay. And then I, my final question is simply, and because we talked about, we used to have a community garden, but that no longer exists, how much desire is there for this? I mean, are there people actively asking you to do this?
You'd be surprised how many people are already jumping on board with it. We've mentioned it to a few folks, and even at Valmish's Food Pantry, I mentioned this to a couple of our guests, we've got a handful of people going, "I want to come help do that, I used to do that in the city I was in over here." The beauty of the, of the community gardens is, is one of the things that Brittany shared on the screen, it gives back to the community, and so between all the food pantries, the food bank, there's going to be a product, abundance of products that can come in and help. What we intend to do with Valley Mission through our, through our monthly classes is make sure we tie these other pieces together. So you want to come learn how to garden, go and talk to Portnivale Partners, it'll be a feeding hub to get people through. There's a lot of, there seems to be a lot of good early buzz on it. Master Gardeners, Brittany's connected with them, they're going to kind of help us organize a lot of the training.
They've already, yeah, several people have mentioned that they would, they would love to teach classes, and they're master gardeners, or they have farms that have done, you know, the Saturday markets here, and so, yeah, they're, they're on board, they think it's a great idea. Everybody that I've talked to would like to be a part of this.
I would say this is a very different structure than the original community garden. When I started, I went out to see it, it was a 13- or 14-year-old girl advocated for this community garden, and they were, it was four or five raised garden beds, they were about this tall, and they were about four by six. So, community garden is really enough food there to, for the neighborhood, but not necessarily for the full community. This is really an opportunity to make a dent in vegetable growth, you know?
And when I talked to the one that was, you know, what was her name again?
Alexis.
Alexis. She, I asked her, you know, "Did you have help or support?", and she said, "Well, a little bit, but it was mostly, for about 10 years, her running this garden by herself, and that is not our plan at all." We feel like, to make it successful, we've done a lot of research, we've talked to people that have gardens in place in communities, and we felt like the best setup was what we are presenting here, where there's plots that people are coming to pay, and by, by participating with a fee, it gives people more ownership to come and, even if it's a small amount, they still are willing to put more effort into it because of that. And so they will maintain their own little plots, and then they have five hours of service that they agree to, besides their plot, that they'll help with the garden, to maintain the pathways and, and to come and help with the community's part of it. Those are things that we have put in our plan.
Thank you.
I do believe Swer Farms has a similar type program. It's a cost-share type program where you can pay for a portion if you want to do a little bit of work, and then it goes, you know, you pay less if you want to do a lot of work and go out and weed, and then, or you can pay the full share cost and really just go pick up vegetables. So it is available out there. I don't know how many patrons they have that use that.
Thanks. Councilmember Paulson?
Yeah, strong proponent for this, and just coincidentally, and to maybe answer your question too, in the last couple of weeks, just coincidentally, two, three people have explicitly asked, you know, "When is this going to happen? Is it going to happen?", et cetera. And over Thanksgiving, I will go to a community garden and harvest some with some in-laws, so I-
That's great.
Think it's a great idea, yeah.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mangum?
I think this is a great idea. My parents in Idaho Falls, they go and volunteer at the community gardens there all the time. And spring and summer, it's buzzing, and people love it. My dad, 82-years-old, is still out there pulling weeds and all kinds of other stuff, along with the barbecue restaurant. I'm like, dude, how do you find time with your old back to do all this? But they love it, and the community loves it, and it creates an engagement, and it creates almost a central hub for people to come and to connect, where else? Otherwise, they might not connect. And so I think this is a good, this is a good plan. We talked about bringing water there, but we didn't discuss the cost of the water itself. So the water bill at the end, because gardens aren't necessarily cheap based on the water usage, will the city subsidize this, or will we absorb the total cost of the water? Or is, are we looking at grants to pay for the water? Because I don't, I don't think that there would be a grant that would come along that would cover ongoing water costs.
Yeah.
So how do we make this feasible?
Well, so what we, what we're hoping with this is to, with the cost that they pay, that that will help to pay for the water. Because when we talk to the people that run the Idaho Falls Gardens, they pretty much said that's what covers that water, the city doesn't cover the water. And there is some things like what she was saying with the bark, and that's, those are things that would help, that we don't have to pay for, or the individuals, so that would help to pay for just those things, or supplies. We're looking at, working with people for donations in the, in the city, like to get, because we would like to have a shed, where that shed holds tools for, you know, anybody that's gardening, that they can go in and use these tools. So there is some cost there that we need to work with, and, and as it goes, like, you know, maintenance costs too. So we are hoping that those, the fees will cover a lot of just really that water and any, you know, other maintenance costs, but if we have to, we would work on other grants for maintenance on that, or volunteer.
Off of North Arthur, traffic-wise, is there any concern there?
No, because when I went and walked that land, there's so much there that we would not need to be next to that busy road. I really don't think that we need to go that far. There's, I mean, we're, there is a lot of space just right by the trail that we could use. So we haven't, we haven't really, this is pretty-
Fresh.
Yeah, fresh right now, so we haven't really plotted out everything with Anne on that part, but we wanted to present this, make sure you guys are on board with it, and then go through all of the infrastructure of the garden.
So one more question. After this work session, when are we estimating to see this at a council meeting?
You know, when are you what?
Estimating to see this at a council meeting?
We would work with legal on a use agreement, probably later this winter, it could be January, February even. They were originally talking about next spring, but recognize that that's probably not going to happen, and they're really a year from next spring to be under construction, so I would say in the next four or five months.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Cheetham?
Thank you, Madam President. A Water Superintendent has joined us in our meeting, and I have some questions about location of water line and any other possible taps and the possible size that would be needed to handle an acre of water.
Sorry, Justin.
Welcome. Join the party.
Yeah, Justin Armstrong, Water Superintendent. So there is water-
Yeah, Justin Armstrong, Water Superintendent. So there is water available through the private frontage. There's kind of a, that private access. It's, it's actually not street right away. It's, it's just city, city road access right now. But there is an eight-inch water line that runs down that with a future stub that was stubbed into that lot for an eighty-inch. So, there's definitely water available along that frontage, but...
You're talking along this frontage here, or?
Correct. Yeah, the east-west drive access there.
So that would be just north of your building, along that street?
Correct.
So your location would need to be on the south end of the lot. Is that what you anticipated?
So yes, we, well, we were looking at, see, south, yes, that area right there, right next to that.
Can you drag your mouse where you're pointing?
Yeah.
Or your finger.
Yep. Oh, there's the mouse. Okay, so right through there.
Okay. So you'll stay close to that road then?
Yep. Because then that will also allow people to be able to just park right along there, get out and garden instead of having to walk really far.
Or park on Arthur.
Or park on Arthur. We don't want parking on Arthur. It's too busy.
Okay. An additional follow-up. Most of the pictures that you showed indicated raised beds were being used in community gardens. Do you anticipate using raised beds, or, or all surface area?
We would rather use the surface area than raised beds. It's, there's more of cost with the raised beds. And if the soil, if we can make it work with the ground and what we need to put in for the soil, I think it would be cheaper to do it that way. And a lot of the gardens we've toured and seen, we don't need to do the raised beds. They look nice, but I don't think it's necessary.
And there was an argument made that if you have raised beds, more senior folks could work those raised beds. It doesn't hold water. I mean, you go to these community gardens, and people of all ages, eighty-two years old and up, are down in the soil doing their thing, because that's what they love to do. So, again, the cost just didn't, it didn't weigh out.
If I could continue. I'm curious about the, the different needs of the things that might be planted in terms of water. How would you propose to separate the watering process for each of the plots? So if the timing is different for one lesee, how do you propose to do that?
Well, one of the things we know works, is we've seen this in, like, the Idaho Falls Community Garden. Each plot has its own line, and each plot has the ability to put a timer on their lines. So it's just basically, if you think of a sprinkler line with a stub, you put your faucet bib on it, you put your timer on it, and hook it up, and off you go. So each individual tenant is responsible for those plots. Again, the committee is also there to help manage the, the timing, to make sure things are not overwatering, whatever it might be. It was interesting, one of the plots we saw in Idaho Falls, because if you, if you know berries, raspberries don't like a lot of water. Blackberries do, but raspberries don't. But they had this section of raspberries there, and their other stuff, and it was all off the same system, and they were flourishing just fine. So I don't know if the tenant of that plot knew to put smaller gallon-per-minute flow heads on it or not. That's, again, could be an education piece that we could take along. But each individual plot will be managed by those individuals.
I, I was raised on a farm in Kansas where we did a lot of surface irrigation. And one of the big problems was tailwater ponds. And where the excess water flows, if it happens to overrun what the soil can absorb. I guess that's a question for the Water Superintendent. Would you anticipate something like that being necessary?
I don't have that information.
I would guess if your amendments are correct on your garden spaces and the timer is set, you're not going to see that kind of overflow.
When I was in Idaho Falls, in, was it April that we went, or May? Anyway, at that point, one of the gardens actually sprung a leak in one of their lines, and they didn't realize at that time, like it had just happened, because it was just coming out of the winter, and they turned them on. And there was a huge pond in this area. And so that, that is one of the reasons there's a committee that is set up to watch and oversee these things that are needed repairs.
Thank you.
Did you?
Yeah.
Councilmember Nichols?
Just a comment. I love it. Particularly if we can keep the cost to the city low. And it'd be great eventually to see more than one Pocatello. Yeah.
I did have a couple of questions myself. One was about, we're talking about a lot of the different costs that you all would bear, and especially some of the ongoing costs. And one is sort of education and awareness. I think the, the garden that you mentioned, Ann, it sounds like, was sort of a one-woman show, and maybe not because it wasn't, you know, that people weren't interested. That wasn't the issue. It sounds like somebody who was just kind of doing her thing. But a, a lot of it is getting people to know that this is there, and know that they can participate in it and everything. So are you planning for some money to be set aside to advertise, and to promote, and to educate?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so our, our plan is to create a website that is linked to Port Nefali Partners, and hopefully the city of Pocatello's website, where they can go on, and it will direct them to this garden website. This garden website, if we, it would be set up that we could create multiple gardens in different locations through the whole Gate City area, the whole valley. So if it's in Chubak, or if it's in Pocatello, or if it's in Inca, they all can go to this one website to find where these gardens are at. And Port Nefali Partners has a committee that is for promoting community involvement in the things that we do. So there's actually a committee that oversees those things, building a website, marketing on social media, those things, that we would have them participate in.
And that's a nice lead-in to my second question, was going to be about, just going back to the idea of having enough people to, to work this and to support it. I was glad to hear earlier, you mentioned the master gardeners. I thought that was, that'd be a great piece. That would also help a lot with education in terms of just the people who want to learn gardening, that kind of thing. Maybe even local schools could participate. I know one of, our charter school in Pocatello did their own garden as well. So, I like that educational part of it, and training part of it. I could definitely use training in gardening, so it'd be something fun to be part of. I was also going to comment on raised beds and overflow. As I mentioned before, all the cities I've lived in have community gardens. But I was thinking, particularly like big cities, New York, Philadelphia, DC, they've been doing this for years, and they're very popular. The community's very involved, very supportive. But I've never seen, I mean, maybe now, but for years, there was never raised beds, and there was never, like, overflow, you know, ponds or places to catch that overflow water. And it, you know, they didn't ever seem to have issues with those things. So I like the approach that you're using, because I think the raised beds would be a big added expense. It, it looks pretty. People have them in their yards, but I don't know that that's necessary. And I've never seen that in community gardens. So, not never, but not usually.
So I just went to, for Neighbor Works, I just went to Minneapolis, just a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
As a representative for Pocatello. And we went and toured their community garden there. It's three acres, and it has been, it's, there's two community gardens in the country that have been from these Victory Gardens, that were established during World War II. And I was so excited to go to that, because there's one in Boston, and the other one is Minneapolis. So I went and toured it. And there was some raised beds, but very small amount. And it was more for people that couldn't get down on their knees and garden. They could stay up, and they were pretty high. There was three or four of those in this three-acre garden. Most of it was just plots that people rented out, and it has been successful since, in the forties. And they've been continuing to do it. And it's beautiful. We went in the fall, where it, it should look pretty ragged, and it was still really beautiful to see how each gardener structures their own little area. They have ownership in that plot.
Yeah.
It was really neat to see.
That's a good thing, too, to have that buy-in, that ownership, will, I think, would really help promote the involvement of the community. Councilmember Mangum?
I, I appreciate this. I think this is a great use of land and resources. Cost-wise, I, I appreciate the fact that we're trying to keep the cost very minimal, especially on the city. But I also feel like we can spend money on worse things. You know what I mean? So, so spending money on education, spending money on helping to feed people, spending money on community gathering, I think that that's, well, it's a good use of funds. Let's not go crazy, but it's a good use of funds. So I think this is a great, this is a great, a great idea, a great plan.
Thanks. We, we recognize that the city would rather not have to put a lot of expense in. So our goal is to do as much as we can. If the, and what we would like to do is meet with Ann and figure out what every, you know, the infrastructure of everything, how, what the costs are, what we are able to do, and the grants that we get. And then if there is any concerns or anything, we would come back to you. But we're hoping that we won't. I mean, we, we are kind of planning to do things as much as we can to not include the city in those expenses.
Councilmember Cheetham has one more.
Well, Justin is, is up. Any idea, at this point, can you take a swag at the size of tap that might be needed to service an acre of gardening?
You know, I, I wouldn't know without, you know, the watering requirements and flow requirements that's going to require, as far as capacity. But, you know, based on the line size that we have available, we should be able to support this.
No other questions? It sounds like all of us are supportive and interested, so I would say keep working on this and move forward. I think this is a great addition to the community. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take your time.
And if you would like, we would like to revise these. There's a, because we were looking at, when we made this, it was for OK Ward Park, so we have the address of that. But we have it all set up, so we would like to have, you guys have copies of these, so you can see.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I'll give you the details of it.
Thank you. Thanks for your time. So, agenda item number three is Local Improvement District, LID request for Cedar Hills condominiums.
Where you want me? Right down the middle. You can be on the end. Yeah, we don't need that. I don't think we're using it.
Yeah?
So, just a bit of trivia before we get started, and introductions and that, that in the forty, thirties and forties, I believe it was, Bannock County had a community garden area, clear out where Costco and everything else is and that. It was...
Merrill?
Huge. What?
Who are you?
I'm just telling you that. I will introduce in a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were starting.
No, I'm not starting. I was just telling you about a community garden Bannock County had, in the thirties and forties, out at where Costco is and everything, the old fairgrounds. So for the item today, my, Merrill Kelt, the engineering department, and we're here to discuss a request, the Cedar Condominiums LID. And we have here also Justin Armstrong, our Water Superintendent, Jared Johnson, our city attorney, and Molly Basiris, the president of the condominium association there. So just a little bit of background, or what we're going to do is, I was going to give a little bit of background, and then turn some time over to Molly to go over the request, and then, and then with Jared to go over some of the statutes and so forth there. I, myself, might have to step out. I have a ten o'clock pre-construction meeting, that I didn't realize this was going to take, the garden would take so long. So, for the past few years, we've been working with the Cedar Condominium Association with their water system. They've been having some failures here and there, and they're looking for all different grants and different ways of trying to, to solve these problems. One of the issue, or one of the suggestions that they came across was an LID. When they do the repairs, they have been being done, the water services and that, to city standards, in preparation to maybe possibly going down this LID route. The subdivision itself was first platted in nineteen seventy-one, and then amended plaid in nineteen seventy-five. The annexation into the city of Pocatello was in nineteen seventy-six. So we're dealing with a system that was prior to, it was in the county. We have no records of, of the construction, the different stuff, other than what we've seen in the last few years, as they've been digging it up and, and seeing what's happening there with the, with the system. So with that, the city received a request on August twenty-second of twenty twenty-five by the Cedar Condominium Association, to be able to, to come and have some discussion here. Also, one of the points would be, is there is no DEQ, or has been no DEQ violations, or anything that's been out there. So, that, this problem, this is all on the association trying to, to rehab and get their system back to where they would like to see it. So with that, also, I guess the assessment we come up with, I think the main line, I was going to ask some questions there, but the main line's probably going to be about two million dollars, I would estimate, to, to replace. And then the service lines, depending on the complexity of that, is going to be another one point five to two million dollars for the hundred lots that is affected by this, this discussion. I will go ahead now and then turn some time over to Molly.
Again, Molly Basiris, I, today, representing the Cedar Hills condo. I am the president of the association. We have over two-hundred-and-fifty residents that live at the Cedar Hills condos, and current, and, and one hundred units. Those are individually deeded units, so each individual owns their home. I foresaw that we had some water issues, and about a year ago took over as the president, and that was my agenda, is to try and fix and secure a safer community for our residents. In working and speaking with Alan at DEQ, I think it's good for you to know that currently, an association like ours in your city, that taps into the main line of the city, has no regulations. So we are considered that we are using city water. So where we tap in it, we don't have to do any water testing or anything else. When I was asked if we had tags, I thought that was very interesting, because they don't monitor our system. Technically, from our hookup on Bannock Highway, you guys do those water tests. And so, it's an interesting fact. Just wanted to point that out. Because the first thing I wanted to do is make sure our water was very safe. We then paid for a water feasibility and water study to see how solid our infrastructure was. After fifty years, you could guess that, you know, it's expected life is only a few years out. In looking at that, then, of course, we came upon the three-point-five to four million dollars. How are we going to replace that, and what does that look like? The city, when annexed the Cedar Hills condo, they took the road that goes up through the Cedar Hills condo. I apologize, I don't have that. I didn't think of that, providing you a map. But they do maintain and take care of the road that goes through the Cedar Hills condo. However, the water, for some reason, was not annexed and taken over. So, at that time, that three-point-five to four million dollars, I thought, what can we do? Interestingly enough, I serve a bunch of other communities, and I was Idaho Association of Cities this year, and that was a question that was asked, is what are these communities going to do to take care of water infrastructure issues, when we are seeing less and less grants and other support out there to pay for these projects? And one of the solutions that many of the other cities are using are LIDs. So I started digging deep, right? I will say Caldwell, if you ever want to look, they have a fabulous online platform that explains their process and how they're doing that. Then I started talking to... Then I started talking to, um, the city of Pocatello, asking you if you had LIDs looking into it. Interestingly enough, the city of Chubak has two that they have done for infrastructure projects. If you want more information, you can figure that out. But, um, then I thought, well, this might be a solution. This obviously, um, is it advantageous, is advantageous to the Cedars? We can fix it and it's advantageous to the city because if that line fails, ultimately we live in your city limits, you're responsible to get us clean and fresh drinking water. And what do we do? Then it becomes a hurry up and we are not being proactive. Then we're just being reactive and having to pay a lot of extra dollars between the two of us to figure out how to get all those citizens water. So with that, um, I went to the community. I will tell you, I believe there's 62 or 63 signatures on there. I stopped at that because that was my threshold of 60 and I have other things to do in life. So I was like, great, I got my signatures, I'm turning that in. I do understand in looking at that and reviewing that a few days ago, that one of those is a trust and one of those, so I don't know if legally that ended up being an issue and we can work out those details. I can get some more signatures if needed, but, um, that's really where we're at. And that's what we're asking you to do is consider an LID. And are you explaining what that is? Yeah?
Sure.
Okay. Perfect. That's my, that's my ask. So thank you.
All right. Jared Johnson, city attorney. So first of all, yeah, we're in the very early stages of this process. We have never done an LID, well, at least in my time here. In my time here, we have not done an LID.
The last LID we did and Justin and I were kind of involved with that, that land and everything there was at the Aspen, uh, mobile home park over there, Forty Oakwood, or Forty Oakwood. And we did a water system and the road system. We did not take the sewer as well as here. The sewer is not on the table for discussion.
So we have done that, but it's been a while. It's a complex process. We're in the very early stages of that process. Like Molly said, we've received the petition. The first thing we are doing is verifying that petition to make sure it meets all the legal requirements. There's no reason to go down the path of, of creating this local improvement district without having that procedural step taken care of properly. That would be a really easy protest for somebody to say, well, you actually don't have 60% of the resident owners of the area. So we got to do that and we will make sure that happens before we move down the road of this process. There's certain steps that the council is required to take once they receive the petition and then criteria that council decides whether or not are met in order to move forward with the process. We don't have to do this. It's an optional thing as long as we meet the criteria that the statute lays out. And those criteria, um, we can go through. I'm not going to give you the details. I mean, it's literally like 47 steps to do an LID. It's a very long process. It's not something that happens quickly. But it is, uh, I just wanted to give you kind of a roadmap of what will be coming in the short term, as it, as it were. Uh, I guess before we get started down that path, is there any foundational questions that anybody has regarding the LID? Cause I don't think you've given, been given really a kind of an overview. I think you have, but maybe it's kind of in there somewhere.
And, um, I have a real quick question and then I'm going to go to council member Chitam and then Bates and then Nichols. Today, we're, it's called proposal on the, um, agenda. And you mentioned petition. When it's submitted, there are certain things that we then have to do in response. We're not officially submitting the petition yet, is that correct? Or we, or, or?
The city has received the petition, which is what gets the ball rolling. Yes. Today's meeting is not even a statutory step in the creation of an LID. It is simply to, cause none of you have actually seen an LID creation in your time on the council as well. So this is simply an informative meeting to kind of get, give you a heads up as to what's coming.
Okay. That's pretty much what I was asking. Yes, thank you. Councilmember Chitam.
Thank you, Madam President. I am concerned by Merrill's comment about sewer not being on the table. I lived at the Cedar condos in 1978 and sewer was a serious problem when those were new. Our unit, which was, we lived in number 28, uh, had sewer back up into the basements three times in the three years I lived there. So I am wondering why if we're fixing the water, why we're not going to go ahead and while we're at it, fix the sewer.
The, the reasoning behind that is because the sewer does not follow the right of way. It goes out through their property, private property, goes under the creek that's along there. It's along the houses and everything, and it is not maintainable the way we maintain the sewer. So unless some serious roadways be put in, which I don't think the homeowners want to do, along there, gravelled to every manhole access and so forth. The city has no desire to take over the sewer because it's not maintainable how we maintain it with our equipment.
Councilmember Chitam, I am. I think the other concern for myself is the cost to the residents. Just doing this 3.5 million, depending on how those numbers flesh out, it can be very expensive for homeowners. We're talking 50 to $100 per unit a month for 30 years. There are residents there that are older and on fixed incomes. And I think if we took the sewer on, that'd be another four or $5 million. And that would cause them some issues.
I guess if I can follow up, has there been any assessment of the state of the sewer system?
We have not done a feasibility study of the sewer system.
There's not been assist there, but they have been camered and we have also looked at the top end as city staff, at some infiltration and had requested some changes and fixes there where infiltration is coming into the, through their system, into the system there. But as far as we know, uh, the system that way and has been camered is in relatively fine position, condition.
So when the annexation was made, we took the property, but we didn't take the water system. Did we take the sewer system?
No, we did not.
So that will still, under the proposal, would the water system then become part of the city of Pocatello?
If that, if the council desires and we go through the LID and it's been approved and processed out, then yes, it would have to be redesigned and reconstructed. That's where the costs come in. I know that the Cedar Association is contracted with A&E Engineering. They've got some plans out there and has discussed that with city staff and putting it together of what it would take to, uh, that system would be up to city standards. And it would be a loop system, would have two tie-ins at Bannock Highway versus the one.
So when the sewer system fails, not if, uh, that would still fall on the residents of the Cedar condominiums?
That is correct. And at Forty Oakwood is the same way, uh, same, we couldn't maintain it and everything. And a lot of the sewer systems are privately done like that. There's not as much maintenance to them. There is backups and different things that they'll have to do on the private side. But at this time, like I said, there's no way to maintain that system or, or how we do it, going on private property a lot and also just getting the trucks around.
Thank you.
Thank you. It was council member Bates.
So Jared, this is pretty similar to, like it functions much like, say, an urban renewal district, but it's for one singular purpose?
Yeah, there's definitely some distinctions between the two.
Can you explain them?
Sure. So this is, this is basically an upfront allocation of funds to the project by the city through means that we'll talk about, um, and then a payment back by all the residents or members of the district over the 30-year period. There, there's, it's, it's taxed each, uh, property tax cycle to the residents. And, uh, so in that way, it's, it's kind of the same, but inverse from an urban renewal district.
Right. Okay. And 30 years?
Yes.
You can also assess those through utilities rather than property taxes.
And, and those are the, yes, those are, there's, there's a few different options we have as we get further down the road, but there are ways to, yeah, decide how we want that special assessment to be paid back to the city. But ultimately, um, yeah, the, the property owners are responsible for the total overall cost. We haven't even, I'm filling in a little bit. Another deputy in my office, Brian, has been handling this for the legal department. He's in court this morning. So I haven't been part of the staff and discussions with staff and with Molly. But from my understanding, it would be fully reimbursed by the residents. Of course, there are other ways to do that and certainly we have different options to look at. But I believe that's the discussion happening at this point.
Councilmember Nichols?
It sounds like Jared is going to explain my question I have anyway, so I'll just hold off.
And if I don't, let me know.
Okay.
Okay. So we've received the petition, we'll verify that petition. The next step will be coming before you in a city council meeting, asking you to file a notice of intention through, by resolution, which is the public notice, putting the, really the residents of the district on notice that it's the city's intention to pursue this process. It doesn't tie you to anything. It doesn't commit you to making any final decisions. It just is really the official notice. Molly mentioned that, you know, a majority of the people have signed the petition, but they might not know the full assessment, the full ramifications of what this LID might mean for them in the future. That, that notice won't have all of those details. It's an estimate of the cost, it's an estimate of the, um, uh, process, the timeline. And we put that out there, we notice it three times in the paper. We have, uh, it's, it's like a lot of our other public hearing notices. And then the residents have the chance to, um, look at that and, and really have a full evaluation and they have a chance to protest that. If a certain number of residents protest that, we have an automatic 180-day stay on the process. And so we would have to follow that where we reevaluate their, evaluate the project, reevaluate their protests. It's unlikely with as many signatures as we already have that we would have that many that challenge it, but it is a possibility. Cause ultimately this isn't a public hearing for the entire city. This is a public hearing for the people that would be members of the district. And they have to do those notice, or those, um, protests in writing prior to the hearing. So it's, it's different that way. At that point, uh, after the hearing, if the council is so inclined to, um, move forward, they would do so by ordinance. And you would have to, in that ordinance, you would have to make three very specific findings. You would have to find that the, the district is in the best interest of the property and of the city. Molly mentioned some benefits to the city, but you as a council would have to decide whether or not there's a city-wide, not every single resident, but some positive impact to the city that justifies going through this process. The, you have to show that there's a reasonable probability that the obligations of the district will be paid. Obviously, if the total estimated bill for this is so overwhelming that it's unlikely that it's a reasonable expense to be asked of those property owners, that's a criteria you would need to consider. And then finally, there can't be, and I don't believe this would be the case, there can't be so many other assessments on those properties that this assessment would be, put those properties to the point where it's more than the value of the property itself. You don't want to go in upside down already on the, on the lien. So if all those findings are met, you would pass the ordinance and then we would move forward with, uh, the actual engineering, uh, the assessment. There would be a role with the, the county clerk. We would decide whether we want to do that as part of a property tax assessment or part of a utility lien. And then we would have to decide funding and, and that's very intricate and we would get down that road. This would probably include outside bond counsel, because we could either do bonds or warrants. That's, that's a process that's, that's in depth. There's administrative costs that come with that. Those administrative costs will also be part of the assessment. Ultimately, other than some significant staff time, the, the total cost of the project, including all the administrative costs, would be borne by the residents of the district. Again, those are all, uh, processes that over the, the course of the entire thing, assuming there's not a 60% majority protest at the public hearing, would be six months to a year. And that's the high level overview, um, without getting into the real details of the process. But the next big step again is that notice of intention by resolution and then the public hearing.
Okay. Councilmember Nichols?
You did answer my primary question.
Okay.
Which was on the bonding and warrants to pay for it upfront.
Yeah.
But so then, is there an individual lien placed on each property that would obligate not only the present owner, but any future purchasers of the property?
Yes.
And, and then what happened if somebody stops paying?
It would depend on how we decided to have that special assessment paid to us. I don't know for sure on the utility side. Molly might have that answer where she's looked at some other cities and how they've done it. With the, with the county, it would go into tax deed if we went through that process, which means they could actually lose their property by not paying. It's like any other property tax, you, you've got to pay that.
Right. Okay. All right.
My knowledge is that it shows as a second behind the tax lien on a deed of trust.
Yes.
So what would that, a utility easement, that would also show on a deed of trust? So it's also enforceable?
Yeah, but I don't want to say how quickly it would be enforceable, because I just don't know. I would happily look into that and get back to you, but I don't want to say something that I'm not sure of.
Great. Thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Chitam?
I need to disclose that Molly and I've had a couple of conversations about this prior to today's meeting. One of the things that we talked about is the way the Cedars condos currently are paying their water bill and their utility bills and how this might well change that so it's not such a huge hit on each individual homeowner out there. Could you go into some of those details for us, Molly?
Yeah, I sure can, councilman. So currently what we do is the Cedar Hills condos pays for all of the water up there for every unit. We pay that as an association. So we pay 55 to $65,000 a year. Can't remember, I think it's 65, for the total of all the users. I believe in interest of the city, once you go on individual meters and, and pay individual costs, I would guess that that usage would probably be a little bit higher. You also will not get the discount that we get for having, um, the, the, um, usage that we do. Is, is that what you were looking for?
Well, yeah, that. The overall bill, um, because when you meter, people use less water. That's pretty well proven. So it could well not cost them what, as much as, as is possible with that because of, of the other side of the expense chart on what they're currently doing.
I can add to that. Yeah, right now they're on a six-inch meter, uh, master meter. So as I said, they're all paying at one. So if you have a toilet leaking or something in your unit, or you're not so worried about water in your grass and everything, but then somebody else is more conscious about it. And there's that battle between it through the LID. If it does go, they will go to individual meters, they will see their own usage. And, uh, whether it goes up or down, uh, that would be up to the individual users to see what that would happen.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yeah, I'd like to follow up on that. So how do you presently pay for your sewer? I mean.
The same. It's through the, it's through the utility billing and the sewer and the water is, is in together. Because it's the, it's the water use and a percentage and so forth. So that's where it comes out. So that's where, that's where it's at right now is it's in one. It's just like our normal, like you would pay in town, you've got your assessment for your water and your sewer.
Right. So, so what happens then if we have, um, public water, but not really public sewer? How are we going to charge for sewer?
That's the same way. We've got those mechanisms. It's not that easy, but like I said, we've got Oakwood, the last one we did. But we do have, uh, those mechanisms still there that would, uh, and we, at times maybe where it's this big of a commercial, maybe there'd be meter in the, meter in the water or the sewer. But then again, there's formulas that says this is how much usage of water and then through water, through the seasonal uses and, uh, and then it's assessed that way.
All right. Okay. All right. Thank you.
I'll ask a question myself. Like, uh, council member Chitam, Molly and I have also had conversations back at the beginning of this process and talked a lot about, um, whether an LID would be, uh, a good option for, for you all. And one of the things that, um, well, there's a lot of reasons that this is a good idea, but, but one of, well, there's two things that I, that really struck me. One was your proactive approach. I really appreciate that and, and sort of coming to the city, trying to, you know, find a solution before it becomes, you know, an emergency situation. So that I really appreciated, but also, um, the idea of individual meters, that you have residents now, you know, you're paying the total cost and then they're just billed, the same amount, but people use water quite differently. And there are some people that are very, you know, conservation minded and other people that aren't. And so this seems to be a, a lot more, uh, a fair approach that I like better. I think it does get complicated when we're doing. I think it does get complicated when we're doing water and changing how we're billing the water, but not changing how we're doing sewer. But if we have that in other situations, then obviously we have a mechanism in place to make that work. So that was one of my concerns. The other concern that I did have is what Rick mentioned earlier about the sewer. It's, it's not an if, it's a when. And I get that if we did both at the same time, that's a massive expense for the residents and probably more than they can do. But at the same time, it's probably more expensive to do them separately and do them later. So it's, it's coming at some point, but that's probably, you know, something you can't do anything about. So.
Councilmember, I addressed that.
Yep.
So, taking over the HOA, there's a lot of things that need to be fixed and a lot of infrastructure that's 50 years old. I will say that once we figure out what we're doing with the water and we don't have to build our reserves to have broken water lines that cost us $60,000, $70,000 every few months, then, a few times a year, then we can focus on the sewer. We can go back and we can look at what that looks like. And I believe we'll have the capacity to take on those things and upgrading those and doing the recommendations that Merrill and his team have provided to us.
Good. And I, I like, again, that you're, that you're thinking about that. But balancing that with what's possible for residents too. So, Councilmember Cheatham and then Nichols.
The third leg of the utility billing stool is sanitation. And how, how is that currently handled at the Cedars? And how might any of this be affected?
Currently sanitation, from my perspective, is the exact same. We, we, we pay for it all. And we include it for all residents. We offer that they'd like to have a recycle can or not. And we pay for those and they pay through the HOA. Is that your question?
Okay. So if we metered water, would it be appropriate to individualize sanitation at the same time?
Yeah, they're currently on cart, so that would be an easy transition.
Okay. What's, what's the current HOA fee?
$3.50.
A month?
And that is because we are building big reserves. We're trying to build some money up to take care of these infrastructure issues.
Okay. I guess that was my point earlier. They're paying $3.50 if we can individualize water and sanitation and they, they take care of the sewer. There's a good chance that fee could actually come down. And, and the overall output of these homeowners could decrease.
That would be good. Councilmember Nichols.
Sure. Jared, this one's probably for you. So let's say down the road, a couple of years, the sewer system just goes particularly bad. Can these LIDs be amended or refinanced or some way then down the road to?
Great question. I know there is an amendment process built into it, but I can't speak intelligently about that specific process. But we could certainly, I, I would imagine based on the process of creating one, that the amendment wouldn't be so much simpler that it wouldn't be easy just to create a new one as, wouldn't be as easy as just to create a new one as well. Because the amendment to add sewer, which is such a separate project, especially the way the sewer is designed, as I understand it in this area, would probably take all the steps of a creation of a new LID anyway.
So can you have two on a piece of property?
As long as you don't hit that criteria that you're overreaching on the value of the property that supports the assessment.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
I wouldn't imagine you would hit it with sewer, but I don't have any idea what a new sewer system would cost, so it's possible.
Great. Thank you.
Councilmember Mingham?
So Jared, you had, you had mentioned this prior, but just so we can, to reiterate, what is, what are the next steps?
The next step would be a council meeting after we've verified the petition, where you would by resolution adopt a notice of intention to create the local improvement district. And that notice is quite extensive, but that would be what is published and made available to the residents of the potential district. So they know whether or not a protest by them is what they want to do.
So timeframe wise, when should we expect to see that?
Honestly?
Rough estimate?
Early next year. I, I don't see it happening in December. It's possible the second meeting in December, but I think it's much more likely because it also requires some estimates on engineering side. I think it's more likely to be January, February of next year at the earliest.
Okay.
And Molly might have a different opinion of that based on what she's looked at and how much staff interaction she's had in the meetings that have been, had that I'm not a part of, but that's my, my estimate.
My understanding was that it, it might be ready for December because we, when we had paid, we as the Cedars had the HOA paid to do the feasibility and to review that. And that did come with an estimate.
Okay.
So we might be further around that than, than we think.
And I apologize. Like I say, I've, I've not been in part of those meetings and so I didn't even know there was a feasibility study already created. So that's, that, that will be very helpful in that, in that process of adopting that resolution, notice of intention of creation. So. One, one to two months. Sorry.
Sorry. Councilmember Cheatham?
This is a question, I'm not sure if I direct it to our public works director or planning and zoning director. If a similar project were to be proposed today as the Cedars condominium project, would it be allowed to be developed the way this has been with these sewer and water and infrastructure problems?
So Tom Kirk, my public works director, there currently is properties being developed with private water and sewer. But we require them when they, when they're put in to meet our standards. So that if we ever at some point have to go through this process, it's already built to our standards. So there are private water and sewer systems currently.
I guess this just kind of reinforces the discussion we had earlier about asking within our area of, of influence to ask that the county enforce the, the construction. So when we do take these annexations, we don't have problems like this down the road. We're not leaving a time bomb for future councils and future residents.
Yeah. That area of impact, I think, yeah, that's important. Other questions, councilmembers?
Just one.
Oh, sorry. Councilmember Nichols, I had you on my list.
So has anyone calculated the potential LID fee for the, just for the water? I'm just trying to get an idea of how much might this cost.
The assessment would be?
Yeah.
I mean, if, I think there's a potentially 100 taps, right? And if it's, if it's $3 million, that's 30 grand per person, right? So over a 10-year period, let's say, if it's a 10-year LID, that's $3,000 a year. I mean, that's very rough.
Right.
So the one in Chubak that was done for sewer infrastructure was created. It's a $47 assessment to each person and there is a $3.5 million project. I don't know what the nuts and bolts of that were, if the city contributed or made any contribution towards that. But it, it's a $47 assessment for a $3.5 million sewer project.
Per month?
I know that, per month, for 30 years.
For 30 years, right. Right.
The LIDs.
That's where I was headed with this, but the length of the LID could drastically impact what that cost would be. To look at the boundary.
Did you guys have a length that you're looking at yet?
I would, I, I personally would like to recommend that we take it out as long as we can. Like I said, we have some older people there that are on fixed incomes. And that, that was a concern when they signed it. They realized that we could, as the HOA, just assess everybody $30,000 and say, let's fix it. But that doesn't, that, that hurts a lot of people.
Right.
And so when I came aware of this route, I thought it was a lot more feasible for the residents to do this.
Do a longer term.
And I think it's a great learning experience for, you know, all of us too. It's fun.
Yeah.
To learn about an LID and how we can utilize that in our community.
I did have one last question, I think, for you, Jared. The public hearing, when we get to that point, now that you said it'd be residents only, where and in what context would that be held? Would it be here or, and would that be, what, who, who would run that hearing?
So, great question. It would be in a city council meeting. Either a regular meeting or a specially noticed meeting. It can be either one. And what it would actually be, it would look quite different than the public hearings you have. It would be a meeting where all of the protests that are filed in advance of the hearing are read into the record in the hearing for your consideration. The, the statute doesn't say you have to read it into the record, but the way that the wording is, we discussed that and decided that that would probably be the best practice is to read those protests, if any are received, right into the record. In fact, the statute contemplates multiple meetings if necessary because if you're talking a large LED, there might be, you know, hundreds of pages possibly of protest. And so those are read into the record for the council's consideration. And then either that meeting or my recommendation would be the next meeting or a future meeting after that is when you would consider an ordinance that would, you would consider whether or not an ordinance is appropriate satisfying the criteria that I mentioned earlier. But yeah, it's, it's called the public hearing in the statute, but it's very different than the public hearings you usually have.
That's what I was wondering, if it would be a separate meeting or if it would be in a regular council meeting?
And it could be either one. This is technically compared to what it could be, this is a fairly small LID. So I don't see any reason why this couldn't be part of a regular city council meeting.
And we would verify, like, the people that were able to testify in that?
Well, like I said, they wouldn't testify in the meeting. They would provide it in advance of the meeting in writing.
And the clerk would read that?
Yeah, possibly. We could figure out that process. But yeah, it would be read into the records and that there's no doubt that the council considered all of those protests specifically.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, council? Thanks. Okay. Thank you. And Molly, thanks again for being proactive on this. Council will just take a short break. 10. Back at 10:30. Okay.
$100.
Seven, eight. Moving on to agenda item number four is property purchase discussion from our fire department. Go ahead.
Good morning, counsel, I'm President Stewart. Ryan O'Hearn, Fire Chief. We wanted to present to you today to follow up on a previous executive session about potential for a property purchase. We've been evaluating a facility, as you know, for a number of years. We've been talking about the need for a facility. This year during the FY twenty-six budget build, we did have one of those on our list that this has become an item. And so as we progressed through, we did find a facility that was for sale that we thought would be very good. As you know, we're currently storing many vehicles outside year-round and doing seasonal storage of some of our brush trucks during the winter at a facility over by the old skate park at Ross Park. Our facility is growing. The facility at Ross Park really is not large enough to fit our needs, and we're only able to get about five of our seven brush trucks. We do have one brush truck on order, so our fleet is growing. And then our vision for this facility, and I'll show you some pictures here in a minute, is that it would be not just a facility for apparatus, but that it also could house some equipment storage as well. Some of the personal protective equipment that we issue to our firefighters is currently stored in their lockers, and it's just a lot of equipment. And moving that off-site would help clean that up and potentially extend the longevity of that. Also, our wildland equipment, the wildland program is very seasonal. Currently, we're storing much of that equipment, just kind of stacked in a corner in one of our apparatus bays, which is where our current fleet is housed in our fire stations. And so having some dedicated space to be able to inventory that and go through it and have it available and clean it would be good. In addition to that, the facility that I'm about to show you also has what used to be a large showroom. It's an old auto dealership. And we have a vision that with some renovation, that that showroom could be turned into a classroom. And those of you that have been to our classroom at Station Two know that it's very tight. It's probably fifteen, well, twenty-five by forty, maybe. And it is very tight to accommodate just the people that we have on shift in a given day. And so this new area that we're envisioning for a classroom would be three to four times that size and would be very nice for classrooms or for meetings or for public events when we might be hosting members of the community for, like, one of a wildland program or something like that to do some public education. And so we're excited for the opportunities that this would potentially bring, and it is centrally located in Pocatello. Sorry, I should keep up with my slideshow here. It has over ten thousand square feet of storage space, and it would house multiple apparatus. We have, we currently have about ten vehicles, one of them being a fire truck-sized vehicle that we're in need of of storage with some adjoining other vehicles, trailers, UTV, which is kind of like a four-wheeler or utility vehicle that we use as well. It does have a parking place and twenty-two parking spaces, and the purchase price is listed at seven hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Counsel member Mingam.
Chief, I see here the central location for the apparatus and other pieces of equipment. Will this impact response timing?
Probably not. I guess we're not envisioning this to be a staffed station that somebody would be necessarily responding out of, but it could centrally locate some of that equipment so that much of this equipment serves. So I guess to get directed to your question, it will improve response times for some calls. And primarily, one of the ones I can see having the biggest impact is on our hazardous materials response. Currently, our hazardous materials vehicle is housed outside at Station Two, so it's in the elements year-round. We have had situations where it has been damaged by rodents and has cost us thousands of dollars in repairs, and it also takes that piece of equipment out of service for a period of time. So that does impede response. Our vision is here that it would be in a climate-controlled situation that's centrally located. This this facility is actually on the corner of Third and East Clark, and so we'd be able to respond to that. The vehicle would be there, ready, plugged in, in a climate-controlled environment. We wouldn't have to load equipment on. We keep a lot of that equipment that is used for hazardous materials response is battery-powered, electrical, very expensive equipment. We want to make sure that it's in a secure environment, so we have to move that equipment to the truck when we respond. I will admit that hazardous materials response is not a daily occurrence. We do not use this truck a great deal, but there is the need for it to be stored inside. We are going to be receiving a new truck from the state of Idaho to replace the current truck here in the next year or two, depending on the lead times of how long that takes to be built. We will be ordering it this year. It would be funded through the state, and so we would greatly appreciate having an opportunity to house that indoors instead of outside. It would improve response in that standpoint.
I had a follow-up question to that. I was thinking about that, too. Just the equipment, and you know, I don't think you mentioned specifically what, but the the equipment that was, that is currently stored in firefighters' lockers that you want to move over there, does that affect response time, like, for them to go get that, whatever that is, and then?
No.
It's not the stuff that they would be using on regular calls?
No, no, this is a backup equipment, extra gear.
Okay.
Yeah. We just, we, you know, our facilities were built, Station One and Station Two were built in the late fifties, early sixties. Station Three, I believe, was built in the, in the, and Station One and Two, one is our building on East Whitman, two is on North Hayes, Station Three is up on Pocatello Creek. I believe that was built in the late seventies, early eighties timeframe. And then Station Five in ninety-three. Station One and Two, we just, when they were built, we were a fire department that did not run an ambulance service and did not have the number of personnel that currently work. And so as we've added pieces of apparatus in, there are hazmat trucks, ambulances, brush trucks, we've kind of reached the capacity that our current stations can hold.
Okay.
So this is just a couple of photos of the the facility. Excuse me, this front area that you're seeing kind of on the right is the former showroom that we would envision turning that into kind of a classroom and meeting room. And then towards the left there, you see that's the the large apparatus bay, which that is the showroom that we would look to turn into the classroom and training facility. And then this is a picture of the area that we would propose for apparatus storage. And then there's an area between those, I didn't, I don't think I have a good picture of that, that is currently office space and was formerly equipment storage for them, and that's the area that we would use for equipment storage, so. We have done some inspections on this, you know, we wanted to make sure that we understood what kind of state the property was in. We did contract out to True North Environmental to perform a Phase One environmental site assessment. They did find what's called a, they identified it as a, I apologize, I want to get the terminology correctly, recognized environmental condition or REC. So they did not find any history of any hazardous materials, concerns, or spills, any incidents at the site. It is a former auto dealership. They they call out what's called a recognized environmental condition, which may be something that would, you would consider or maybe want to do additional testing. Some of the things that they called out on that were a former underground storage tank that was remediated, and we do have documentation that I was able to get from the, excuse me, from the DQ on that, and it was remediated in nineteen ninety-eight. We do have the documentation for that. The site does have a water-oil separator, which is a way to ensure that we're not discharging oils and stuff that may be washed off vehicles or when working on vehicles into the sewage system. We did, with Tom's assistance, and we had Rota Ruta put a camera down that yesterday. It looks to be in good order. We may need to either have it pumped out or cleaned prior to taking ownership is something we might consider, but we were aware of that. WPC was able to provide us with some information that that has been maintained by the current So let me get to my due diligence notes here. It does have some hydraulic lifts. I don't think we probably intend to use the hydraulic lifts, but they are those in-ground rams, and and the concern through the environmental site assessment would be that you may choose to do some additional drilling and sampling to see whether there was. There's no indication that there's ever been a failure or a spill, but this site assessment is to try to make you aware of conditions that might warrant additional testing. So overall, we feel like the the site is in good condition, and it's probably similar to the fire stations that we currently have. They all have sumps that we maintain and have been in similar use.
Chief, council member Paulson has a question.
So if we have to wait till the next week's meeting, are there any assurances from the realtor owner or something that no one's going to buy this before then?
We have a purchase agreement right now
Okay.
that we have entered into that is contingent upon your approval and a satisfactory due diligence period. And so we are, I guess, under contract as long as as we're satisfied with the findings of the due diligence process and as long as the council is supportive and approves the purchase.
Thank you.
And council member Nichols?
So do you plan on doing any additional testing, or are you comfortable taking it like it is now?
At this point, I had not planned on doing any additional testing, just due to time and cost. We feel like it is in similar condition to our fire stations with the sumps and the work that's been done with having trucks that have been washed and and maintained and maintenance on it, so I hadn't planned on doing any additional testing.
Great.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see you.
No worries.
Go ahead, Cory.
Chief, do you see, and what's the timeframe that you think that this facility will be appropriate for fire department use? Do you think we'll outgrow this and have to go find another facility? Are there more apparatus possibly coming, more equipment coming that will outgrow this in the near future? Ten years, twenty years, next month?
Well, certainly, that's kind of been the challenge that we've been waiting for is wanting to make sure that we found a facility that was big enough to suit our needs for years to come and not just something that was available right now. And that's kind of where we're at now, is we're split between multiple different sites. We do have a facility on North Hayes that we're using, and it's just not big enough, and it's only for equipment. It's an old Parks and Rec building that that we're maintaining. So I think that this facility will fit our needs probably for twenty years for apparatus and equipment storage. I think it's ready for us right now for putting, you know, we could really have our vehicles in climate-controlled storage as winter is approaching. The classroom portion, I think, with all honesty and transparency, is going to require some renovation, and that's probably going to be a few hundred thousand dollars of additional costs. We do have funding in our fire capital line right now. That funding has been identified for apparatus facility, and it's come through deployment revenue. So this is money that the wildland program has helped us bring in, that we can now reinvest in in some infrastructure to house our equipment and our and our apparatus. We're hopeful that we could also contribute to that renovation cost by using some fire deployment revenue. We we have an upcoming budget amendment in in December, and we're starting to receive a lot of the FY twenty-five deployment revenue from the Idaho Department of Land, so.
Council member Chee.
Chief, is there anything that would prevent you from moving trucks into that facility on December thirty-first? Anything that would need to be done? The doors work, all, everything's suitable, the roof is good?
The roof has been, when we walked through it with our building department, they did comment that they had actually walked through it with somebody that was looking at potentially purchasing it before we entered into this purchase agreement. And one of the things they had identified that is, could potentially require a roof. We did bring a roofer over to look at it. He felt like it was in good condition. He did give us a ballpark of what we'd be looking at and whether we did the entire roof or just the front section or just the back section. He didn't think it was super critical, but I think that we would want to be open to the idea that we would maybe need to put a roof on it, and that cost is probably about eighty-five to a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Council member Bates?
Chief, I'm so excited about this. Like, I am so glad that we're finally, like, getting that hazmat truck indoors. Can we fit all the apparatus that needs to be stored in this facility?
Yeah, I think, I definitely think we can. I haven't gone and measured it, and we certainly haven't pulled all of the trucks that we would want to put in there, in there. But if you look at this, I mean, they've got, you know, one, two, three, they've got six pickup trucks and a car in there and a trailer, and we have, I've identified about ten vehicles, nine of which are pickup-sized trucks, full-sized trucks or ambulances. That would be our brush trucks and our ambulance. And then one other pickup truck, and then the full fire department, fire engine-sized truck, so I think it would, it would be adequate for that.
Okay, and then I do have a question. The classroom, the one that we currently use, which I've been in, and it is a small space, how routinely is that used?
It's used a lot. We use it probably weekly for classes. We have crews over there today with the representatives from the factory for this fire truck we just got are here, training us on the use of its aerial device and all of its accessory systems, and so we use it very frequently. I think we would even use it more probably for interaction with the public and other things if we had a better facility, maybe even hosting training. Right now, sometimes when we talk about putting on a fire inspectors class or something, we're constrained because of facilities, and we've leaned on other departments like the police department and the water department, which is fine to use their facilities, and we certainly would make this facility available to those departments as well.
Yeah, and then just my last question. So with the funding coming from the fire capital line, we can pay for the building all upfront through the funds that are there?
Correct.
Is there enough funds to do the renovations for the classroom at the same time?
I don't, I don't think we would have. With existing funds now, prior to receiving any of the
The deployment.
deployment revenue from this fiscal year, because that's just started to come in, and we're just starting to see that, we would have enough for the building now and potentially if we decided to do a roof now in our fire capital, and then that would pretty much exhaust what we have, again, prior to looking at any of these budget amendments or how we choose to, what we choose to do with that money.
Okay, thank you.
Council member Nichols?
Hi, chief. So seven hundred and ten thousand dollars for ten thousand square feet. That seems like significantly cheaper than we could build something for, up new, right?
That is correct. And while I did not call a contractor and actually get a formal bid to build a ten thousand square foot steel building, we did talk to some people. We talked to Tom, and we talked to a contractor just informally and said, what does it cost to build one of these? And the prevailing rate is somewhere between a hundred and twenty, a hundred to a hundred and fifty dollars a square foot, and that's not taking into consideration the property. So you're, and so we felt like this is about half of what we could potentially build one for, and and then the timing and location is nice, too. Certainly, building a new facility is an option. That's, you know, obviously further down the road in time, and and it's unknown where it would be, but we feel like this facility now represents good value with some additional costs. You know, this is not a finished cost that is going to fit all of our needs for twenty years to come. We have some vision, but I think with with some investment in this building, its location and the potential that it brings for these other things, we feel like it's a good option for us right now.
Right, okay, thank you.
Council member Bates?
Do we have, do you have an estimate or an idea of how much we expect to receive from the twenty-five wildland deployments?
So we probably, this is just a, an estimate, but I bet we did about a million dollars in accounts receivable that we will have come back, and and we may owe some of that back for personnel and administrative costs to the general fund. There certainly would be probably a couple hundred thousand dollars at least worth of the additional revenue that we get for the use of the brush trucks. And in the past, we've put that into our capital line, and and that's what we used to order this new brush truck. And so that would be money that we could reinvest, and then whether the council chooses to allow us to access any of the the personnel or operating dollars that may have otherwise been covered by the fire department budget.
Yeah, but but net, maybe two hundred thousand or so? Okay.
Other questions, counsel? So thank you, chief. Go ahead.
I guess we are prepared to bring an agreement for you or an author, a request to purchase this property next week at the council meeting, if that's like something you'd like to see.
And are our councilor in favor? I think, yes, go ahead.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for moving on that, because I think council member Nichols made a good point as far as we've been needing to have storage, and we were talking about building something, but it sounds like this is going to be a much more economical solution, so.
I think this brings a lot of potential. We're pretty excited about it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, council will move to agenda item number five is Open Gov Budgeting and Grant Management Solution Proposal from our Finance Department and Planning and Development Services. Finance Department staff and Planning Development Services staff members will be present, will present, sorry, information and seek council feedback regarding the Open Gov Budgeting and Grants Management software solutions. These tools are designed to advance council priorities for accountable fiscal management and public funds by providing a public transparency dashboard, community feedback tools, and an interactive GFOA approved online budget book. The grants management module would offer a centralized cloud-based interface to manage all phases of grant administration. Software integrates the city's existing financial system and enhances functionality without disrupting current workflows.
Good morning, counsel. As you see, we're a collaborative effort here, so I'll introduce myself and the other two. I'm Chantel Macy with Finance.
Darren Hill with Finance Department.
And Christine Howe with the PDS Department.
And I just want to do a quick overview. I'm going to kind of do an overview of what we're looking at, why we're looking at the system. Christine is going to go over how it's important to grants, and Darren's going to just kind of review kind of the software and explain what it entails and what it looks like, okay? Just to give you a quick overview. So over the past several months, we've actually taken, taken a little bit of time to evaluate some different systems. So we've currently looked at three different systems to basically help us with budgeting and the ACF or the audit. It's been a long, thoughtful process, I will tell you. We want to make sure it's the right fit for Pocatello, not just the right fit for this, you know, a department. It needs to be the right fit for the city of Pocatello. So we're looking at one that improves efficiency, improves accuracy, it gives us transparency across all financial functions. So currently, as you know, through the budget process, we have managed this through Excel spreadsheets and Word documents. It's served us well, but it's been time-consuming, it's prone to manual errors, so our goal is to really move forward to a more integrated, automated solution that streamlines workflows and enhances collaborations through departments. So most financial systems, or what they call ERPs, do not have a budgeting module. It is always a separate. So it's not like this is something that could be purchased with an entire system. It is always separate, so every city always has a separate module to help them with budgeting. So we're looking at a robust budgeting and grant tools system. These help with trends, forecasting, tracking, data visualization, so there's so much more we can focus on to strengthen the budgets and to watch the flows of grant, the grant process, so we know how to track where the grants went, how the money was allocated. Okay? During our evaluation process, I did look, excuse me, we did look, it's a long process. We did look at three different systems. Our goal was to address our immediate challenges, not only to address our immediate challenges, but to look for a platform that provides a strong foundation for long-term growth. So this is not going to fix an immediate need, this is going to fix a long-term need we've had for our financials. Open Gov has offered scalability, flexibility, and expanded our process for, will, can help expand our process for reporting. for reporting requirements. It's also ADA compliant. If you know that new rule that has come through that everything that is posted to the website does need to be ADA compliant. So if you want to go to, oh, we're at slide number two. So if you look, really what we're looking at is one of the goals for mayor and council was to proper management of money and budget. Okay, Open Gov uses tools, it's used by lots of other cities. Give me a second. Apparently I'm getting old and I need my glasses more than I think, so. It also demonstrate, so Open Gov, it helps demonstrate that we value data-driven decision-making and want to give leadership and the public an accurate insight and tell, into how our city resources use the city resources financially and includes grants, how we track grants, okay? So project, or slide number three. Open Gov is currently being used successfully throughout Idaho. It's at the state controller's office. It's at Ada County, Bannock County, city of Caldwell, city of Lewiston. I do want to note that I've actually called at the three systems we were looking at, I called every city that used the software and I spoke directly to their CFO, their budget analyst, their budget manager, whoever controlled that and asked them the ins and outs. I do want to specify, I did not call the company's references. I actually went and found cities that used it and asked them implementation, use. I did all the hard questions and didn't go for the warm and fluffies from sales calls. I'm going to put that out. So if you look at what it can do for budgeting, so as you know, we do it on Excel right now. We kind of go back, we need to adjust things. This will be able to do five-year analysis. So you're going to be able to see two or three years budgets, whatever the council would like to see. We can see multiple years budgets versus actuals instead of using Excel spreadsheets and trying to toggle back and forth between the two. Again, it's been useful, but we're trying to make progress for the future. It actually helps us identify patterns, monitor spending consistency, and improve our accuracy of forecasts. There's modules in there that can look at what our salaries are and say we are going to do a 1% increase and we can adjust things and it can show us what those are. So you have the better, you can make decisions, better decisions for the entire city. It'll give us variance analysis. Right now, I do a lot of analysis in Excel and try to give departments kind of what they need and different graphs and different stuff. So again, you do have manual error, so it's nice to be able to integrate with a system that can assist us with those. It also, it will help flag budget variances, giving us an opportunity to be proactive with where the budget's at, the budget versus actual, so we can make decisions earlier on if we need to adjust the budget. And also will help cut down on records requests, which take up a lot of staff time. So this can be something that will have public transparency. The council can have their own dashboard. There's lots of existing things that can help. Budget book, this is created manually also between Excel and Word, and it does take a lot of time. So what brought me, this brought, brought this to the front right away was watching other cities' budget books and how much information and data is in there to make better informed decisions. So it will reduce, again, for the budget books, it will reduce manual updates, save time, and increase reliability. So overall, the hope is if council approves, it makes our budgeting process faster, more accurate, easy to understand for both internal and the community. One thing I do want to add on this is on these dashboards, do you have a call box?
Call box, yeah.
Each department, and we'll explain this later, each department, I don't think we're showing. So with this budgeting tool, I'll just keep talking as he's finding it, with this budgeting tool, each department is given access to the program where they can change their budget. What's happened in the past is, say, we've done a flat budget and the council or whoever decides, let's adjust that a budget one, you know, like 1% by percent, not 5%, that was exaggeration, I apologize, 3% is our max, woo, let me get that straight. But they have to go manually change their budgets. There were some departments that had to change, manually go change their budget in our system five times, based on whatever conversations we have. It's very frustrating for a department. So we have our Excel sheets, departments have their Excel sheets. This would no longer be Excel sheets. Everybody is interactive, all on one. So you'll look at the city of Caldwell. I can go into any department at any time and I can see what their spending is or what we've allocated or what we want to allocate. So there's no question, we can dig in. This can be updated anytime we want for council and Theron will go in this later. Or it can be updated at a set time for public. As we close a month, we can have it updated. So just want you aware of the, that what we can do for departments and help with the frustrations during budgeting time.
Just wanted to ask a quick question about that. I think, you know, it's a lot more efficient to allow departments to be able to make those modifications and updates and everything, but I'm assuming there will be controls in place as far as who can make those changes, that you can't have random people changing things.
And Theron will go into that. There's administrative privileges for everything, so we can dig into those details.
Great.
So I probably got too in-depth, but they also have the budget books posted in line, online. I can go into any fund and see what their proposed budget is. So it's more interactive. And again, it's a choice whether or not, how much council sees, how much public sees. It's not an all or nothing. I think Caldwell chose to do everything. They kind of full access on theirs. Okay, if you want to go back to, yeah. And Bonnie is out sick today, so I'm going to cover the audit. On the audit, this takes a lot of time. This is a lot of manuals. So we're really trying to look at, it will link with our system, okay? And it actually gives you the, the direct actuals and we don't have to do a lot of reconciliations. Bonnie spends a lot of time provide, doing reconciliations on every single account. If she makes a change, because it's an Word and Excel document and one thing is out of balance, she has to change it on potentially 28 pages. It does not automatically do that for her. So this will provide the ticks and ties all the way through the entire act for. And it will help her, her and the finance department get everything turned in and timing out. So it's really going to make it more efficient. So, and all of this alliance with GFOA standards, you might hear that come out of my mouth a lot, but it's been a lot of training and knowing what is required of governments, what the standards are, and how we can put those best practices in place. So I'm going to turn the time over to Christine to look at the grant options.
Yeah, and the grants does segue quite nicely from the audit component, because a lot of the work that we've been doing in the grants division in conjunction with finance has been a response to ensuring we're compliant with our audit requirements. Under the, the federal regulations for particular spending of federal funds, you have to comply with what they call the single audit. And so once you hit a threshold of federal funding spending that exceeds, is a million dollars or greater, you have to have those additional components in your, in your audit. And so Pocatello reached that, that threshold a few years ago. And so for that reason, we've been doing the single audit in our last several audit years, as you may have seen in those documents. And that just, again, necessitates a level of tracking and compliance that's a little more scrutiny so that we're ensuring that we're in compliance with the regs. As you can see here, we, we have a lot of grants in the city. Historically, those have been managed by individual departments and we're starting to kind of consolidate those into the grants division to ensure that we have consistency in our reporting, tracking, the processes, all of that. You can see the alphabet soup of federal agencies that we work with for these grant programs in addition to several states. I have been working with staff who do, do a lot of their grant management in their departments to try to help centralize this. And we've put together a grant tracking spreadsheet that I'm building in formulas and creating multiple workbooks and we're trying to get it all into one location to help with the audit as well as our routine annual tracking. And that spreadsheet right now has 66 grants on it for approximately 54 million dollars. So that's the money that's kind of at risk that we're managing here. You know, that any dollar spent ineligible or that we don't track appropriately could have to be paid back. And to do this internally on our existing system, we use account codes and project codes. If you miss adding a project code to an expenditure, you have to go through a lengthy process to go back in time, re-add that code. It then gets reconciled on the next month's report, which is put out the subsequent month. So if I have an error made in January, I don't see that realized in my actual budget and reports until probably mid-March. And so I can't quite reconcile that with the grant until almost three months later. And so we're kind of working in a lag time here with our current system, trying to balance that with our Excel spreadsheets and then the deadlines of all of the either quarterly or monthly or annual federal reporting that we have to comply with. And that's kind of just the nature of the beast. But this software, if you want to go to the next slide, offers a lot of opportunities for us to centralize those processes and allow, as Chantel said, certain folks that need those administrative privileges to be able to log in and update these grants from the application. So the, the very onset when we decide to submit an application, all the way till closeout. And what was especially interesting about this program, what I found when finance kind of looped me in and asked me to sit in on the grants module conversations, the folks at Open Gov that are working on this had experience in state, local, and federal government. And so, you know, we were doing our jargon speak. I'll save you all of the acronyms and terms, but they understood the grants and what needed to be reported. They understood 2 CFR 200 and the single audit requirements. So every field and module that you'd need to fill out existed in the platform. As I mentioned, right now, we're trying to piecemeal that together with our own Excel spreadsheets. When we decide to apply for a grant, I literally create a file in a common drive, download documents in, and then create additional files and, and there's human error there. There's, you know, folks may not have access. It's hard to, to know exactly where everything might live. So institutional knowledge could be lost. But this would centralize it all in one location and just reduces that risk and liability for the city. When I first joined Pocatello, we had some issues with our lead safe and healthy homes grant. A few of you were on the council at the time, so you may remember, we did have to come and pay funds back to HUD because they were misappropriated. And that, not only did we have to pay for the funds, you know, that were ineligible to be spent, but I spent many, many hours of staff time doing the due diligence to find those errors and, and look for, you know, the documentation for that. So that's several hours of staff time from previous errors that could be alleviated by having a central location and a process that's, you know, built into this, this program. We did kind of just a quick analysis of the amount of time that we spend on some of these grant, grant projects in terms of the internal staff time for administration of it. And it's over 1,000 hours sometimes in a, in a fiscal year. And in the finance department, we previously also had a project accountant position, which has not been filled since I've, it was vacated shortly after I joined the city and has not been filled since. And so those tasks and duties of that project accountant have kind of fallen on the staff who manage these grants, particularly, you know, airport, PRT, and the grants division.
Christine?
And so I could see this, this helping alleviate that, that burden on the staff that was originally filled by a position in terms of sort of looking at the cost benefit there. Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, Dakota, sorry, Councilmember Bates has a question.
Thank you. Well, I'd like to start by saying, can we start this like yesterday? I'm so excited about this. This is awesome. I'm wondering with the grants, with this public dashboard, would grants be part of this public dashboard? Would, would this grant spending, sometimes I worry we act like grants is that there's no risk to the taxpayer, but if we're not compliant, there is huge risk to the taxpayer. So are these grants going to be public in part of that dashboard? Is there a way to do that?
I believe so.
Yes.
And Theron can kind of get into that.
Public transparency dashboards are very customizable. As long as that grants data is in there, we can create those visualizations and post to the public facing side of it.
And so Christine, I guess one question with that is where there is this lag time and, you know, if we spend and we don't get reimbursed because we weren't compliant, how does that show up for the public?
Right, so I think what you would see is on your revenue side, if you published kind of both the expenditure and revenue in whatever format you wanted, you would see that difference in the number there.
And I mean, so we could do that, that could be public.
If the council chooses, yeah. This is totally open to what we want the public view to be. It's not that we're wanting to hide everything, but it's, it's a council decision to see how much we, how granular we get.
And timing, like you mentioned.
Yes.
Doing it after months have been closed.
Yeah.
Then we would want to post the actual data.
There's some closing things we have to do in finance in order for the month to be reconciled. So there would be just a little lag time for probably the public facing view versus the, the live view that department heads or different departments would see.
That's great.
And Councilmember Nichols has a question. So is this a complete financial management system or just a system to be used for budgeting and grants management?
I'm going to get into that.
Okay.
If you'd like to wait.
Yeah, I can wait, that's great. And if I could just follow up real quickly to Councilmember Bates's question. You said earlier that Caldwell had decided to make it fully transparent. Was that, did that include grants or was that solely on budgeting?
When I talked to the bud, I can't remember if she was the budget manager, the CFO, I've talked to many cities, so apologies. With her, it was just the, the budget process and the budget digest and the act for. So they have not, to my knowledge, they don't have the grant software, but I didn't specifically ask. I was more focused on the budget process and the act for.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to get into the software itself and try to give you an overview. The big thing to note with this is it is a separate system, so it integrates with our financial system and leaves those core processes and workflows alone. And like Chantel mentioned, you know, these, these budgeting tools and grants management tools are always extra. So cities always get an additional tool to help streamline that process. This, it's, it's a whole suite and I'll show you in a minute. It's powerful tools that increase the ability for city departments, finance, and elected officials to collaborate and communicate with each other and the citizens. And this suite of tools is designed specifically for local and state government. And Chantel has a large list of state entities and other Idaho cities that are currently using their software in one form or another, if you guys would like more information on that. And how this works is it's a full integration, so it uses an API, full integration with our ERP system. And we control when that data is sent to the dashboard. Like we saw with Caldwell, it was live, so it looked like they were.
November 12th was the last time.
November 12th was the last time they updated that budget book. But like she mentioned.
Wait, where are we, the 12th? Sorry, I just looked at the date.
It's, it's close to live anyway. And that is controllable. And then when you're done with the budget process, you know, the collaboration between the departments and finance and all the approvals are done, then you export that final product, that data goes back into the financial system. So that way it is more of a manual process to put that work you've done in this tool back into our main financial system. This is the visualization that really sold me. So as we were looking. So as we were looking at, you know, these other companies and alternative products, I saw this and I saw an option for a long-term strategic option for the city. And what I mean by that is they have solutions that cover needs all across the city. Right now, we're just looking at the budgeting and performance, which is in the bottom left of the circle. And on the right side of the circle, that little orange dot for grants management. And the reason the grants management is over there is it's actually a part of the government app builder, which is this app they use to build all kinds of customized tools for the government. And what I see is if there's a need in the future over the course of, you know, five to ten years to upgrade or bring on other city departments into the suite, we're actually simplifying the overall system. Where it is now, if you get these disparate products from other companies, you have to deal with integration and data communication across different software. It increases complexity and increases risk of errors. So if we go this route, we have this option of bringing more of the city onto this over time. These are the key highlights for the budgeting and performance solution, which is what Finance is looking at. It covers the operating budget, workforce planning, which is what we call salary projections. It allows departments to do a lot more what-if projections. So instead of entering all this, the data in manually and then printing a report and doing iterations of that, you get a dynamic dashboard that's got a great user interface and you can do these projections with vacant positions or different benefits much easier. It also has a capital planning aspect to it that we might utilize down the road. And the performance management function would allow us to do metrics and goals and then track those against spending. Chantel, we looked at the online budget book for Caldwell and that's also a product that comes out of the solution. This is kind of hard to see, but this is a snapshot of the user interface. This would be the budget timeline, so they have a timeline you built in with the calendar. It alerts people when you're getting close to those key timelines. There is an AI tool in the top right, you can toggle that on or off to get some additional help with analyzing financials. And yeah, there's just a lot of cool features on that. This slide shows a snapshot of the dashboards you can create. So you can create custom dashboards for each city council member that shows the financial data how they want to see in these nice charts and visualizations that pulls from the data. This is where you can create the public-facing dashboards that could show the grant data. And then different department heads or the Finance Department, you can all customize these and make it so it shows you what you want to see, how you want to see it. This would be an interesting new feature. They have a community feedback tool that allows you to create survey-type interactions with the public. And then you can take that data and build reports and integrate that into your strategic planning however you see fit. Just some additional key points for the budget book. She mentioned a lot of this, meets GFOA standards, uses a single source of data. So instead of, if you have to change something in your budget book, you don't have to go throughout the publication and make sure all your numbers align. You change it in a single source and then that data is spread throughout the publication. This is very customizable. You'll see cities, you know, putting pictures of their department heads or departments on their department page, their strategic missions, whatever they want the public to see about their department. It's ADA compliant, so it's got, you know, screen reader capability for the public and they can also translate it into nearly any language that they would need. This is an overview of the grants management solution we were talking about. The key point here is it's full lifecycle tracking from pre-award to post-award and reporting. And it manages the compliance with CIFA, CFDA rollups. Got that correct?
Yeah.
And it does that automatically, so it's purpose-built for government grant management. And implementation, so this is an overview of their implementation teams. The important thing to note here is after implementation, you're assigned a custom success manager. So you have one point of contact that continues with you. And they've won a lot of awards and gone through thousands of these successful implementations and we see a lot of them in Idaho. This is just a little timeline of the implementation. With one solution, it ranges three to four months, but since we're looking at two, our estimate is about six-month implementation for this. We've heard really good things about their implementation. Chantel has talked to people directly that have gone through this and heard good things. And it's, they make it very easy. This is the financials. This is a Sourcewell purchasing co-op quote. So OpenGov and the state of Idaho have a contract and we will be piggybacking off of that contract. They give you a quote for a four-year term, but we realize we want this to be one year at a time. So they have a termination for non-appropriation clause where the contract can be ended with a thirty-day notice before renewal. This quote includes both the budgeting and performance and grants management solutions. And I can also provide a breakout of the individual solutions if we'd like to see it that way. And the legal department has reviewed all of this purchasing information. I'd like to turn it over to you to talk about.
So I just want to reiterate on the implementation. When I talked to the city of Caldwell, rave reviews. Everything they promised, they fulfilled. There was, I said, what were the hiccups? And she's like, very few. They were phenomenal walking through. And the main thing she was pointing out, if you're in spreadsheets and you change to a system like this, the amount of time you save, you can do more of the analyst-type thing on the budget instead of trying to get everything to balance. So the difference in how she's able to manage the budget is huge compared to what it was with Excel sheets. So, and looking at this, I know you look at the cost, but you really look at long-term wise. And the implementation cost is quite a bit, but when you throw grants in there and the amount of money that we actually have in the city, it's a great stewardship, it's a great investment. And when we were looking at Finance, we're really so excited about something like this, that the Finance Department is willing to fund. From, we have money in our reserves to be able to fund this entirely for the first year. And as we said, we did a collaboration with the Grants Department and we're willing to pay for their implementation costs also.
Councilmember Chiedem and then Mangum.
Your slide says the estimate of cost is based on agreement before the end of this month. Are they basing the cost on the city population size or budget amounts or number of grants? Or is there an indicator there of how that's determined?
Yes. For grants, they do base it on the volume and the amount of grants managed. And I believe they did the same thing for the budget planning. So they have a
Yes.
A dollar amount that we manage the budget and
How many licenses are we purchasing? How many users will be allowed?
That's a great question. So it's unlimited users, we control the access. Actually, it says it on the top of this slide. Unlimited users.
Oh, yeah.
Ongoing maintenance, support, all future software enhancements and updates are included.
Is this a cloud-based system?
Yes.
Okay, what's security?
That is a great question. Enterprise-grade security. OpenGov is a SOC two, type two, and state ramp authorized, meeting or exceeding federal, state, and local cybersecurity standards.
Can I turn to a member of our staff in the back and ask our IT manager if that sounds sufficient, sufficiently secure for city records?
Tris Horns is CIO for the city.
Yeah, it's more than sufficient. I don't know of any standard that would be any higher.
Good, good. Do you upload current data to this? Is there one upload or do we have to map every file?
So during the integration, it's, that's why it takes six months, is our chart of accounts is mapped to the software.
So we would be using two systems for six months?
Well, so during the budget, here's the nice thing about the budget process. For the budget process, we use this software for budgeting and then we don't upload until it's approved by the council into our system. So you're not going back and forth inputting with two systems. You're putting everything into one software, being able to use projections. Once it's approved, then you integrate it in to the ERP system.
Okay, so you're inputting fresh data based on the current budgeting timeline, okay. Did anybody, when you were doing research, say, I wish it would? And give an indication of any limitations they found?
Yes, I did. When I called, I will not say the city. When I called one city about one of the softwares we had looked at.
A different one.
A different one, not this one, because we looked at three. They said they wish they had never purchased that software. So they went through why, it was not OpenGov, it was a different one, but they said they wish they would have explored their options further.
But what about this one? Did anybody say?
I have not heard one negative and I have called quite a few cities.
Okay.
Not everybody has implemented what they, some of the budgeting tool. But the cities that did implement budgeting tool are, like, it's a time saver, it has been phenomenal. So I have not heard negative on anything with OpenGov so far.
Do they provide multiple backup locations?
Yeah, they use AWS servers, which is Amazon, and they have AWS backup.
Will this integrate with Transparent Idaho?
I'll have to look.
Yeah, we'll have to look into that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Real quick, can I cut in here? Thanks for, sorry, I'm so behind on this one. But for it to integrate, you've only, have you only spoken to other cities in Idaho or are you talking about across the country?
Across the country, but I mainly focused on Idaho specifically.
Okay.
They gave a bunch of references and I chose to go outside the references and call places that were not on their reference. And so I just searched around to who had OpenGov and then I'd call those cities. Not everybody called me back, but I did, I feel like I've done my due diligence to see. My questions I asked when I called is, what do you like, what do you dislike? Would you do it again? How long did the implementation cost? Was there any hiccups that you came across? Do you wish you would have done? So it was like twenty questions. I felt like I was a reporter asking them questions. But I feel like I asked the hard questions that they don't typically give you when you are just talking to a rep with the company.
I guess my, the point of my question though is, is to Councilmember Chiedem's question of will it integrate with the state's financial software that they're pushing everybody to integrate into? You spoke to a number of cities, large cities, small cities?
Uh, comparable to Pocatello, so I, there is City of Caldwell, there's Ada County, which is bigger, but there's also like some cities, Durango, so I tried to keep it, we're a different city. We're not a small city, we're not a big city. So I tried to make sure we were comparing apples to apples, not oranges to apples. And so I really tried to make sure it was cities relatively. Now, as far as the open transparency, I don't think this company could continue to stay in business if they weren't working towards that goal.
I want to just add to, the State Controller's Office uses this.
Okay, so it should absolutely integrate. I guess that's, my thing was is, we don't want to do anything if it's not going to integrate in a year or two. We want to make sure it is and so it sounds to me like it would.
Yeah.
Sorry, Rick.
My last concern, you had that circle of the various modules. Is, did you run across other cities that have adopted some of those other modules or using them all?
Nobody I know is using them all right now. However, really, when you look at any type of systems, you want to build a foundation and you need to get collaboration and involvement from every department. And so this is more like, I don't know what other cities, if they have long-term plans. You know, that's not something we really discuss, but in our mind, it's a long-term plan for the city to get collaboration and department buy-in.
Idaho Falls uses the permitting software.
Oh, and the Bannet County uses the permitting software.
And Bannet County.
Yes.
Good, thank you.
Okay, thank you. It sounds like we've got Councilmember Mangum and then Councilmember Nichols.
Can you just go back to the slide with the cost?
Also, if I can interject, just doing some quick research. Based on my quick finding, it is, Controller's Office is using open.gov as part of the Transport Idaho Initiative. So it's actually what they're using.
Good.
If my research is correct.
Okay, Councilmember Mangum.
So this cost, the cost of the rollout, will the Finance Department be responsible for this cost or will we divide this cost up?
The first year, where the Finance Department is willing to take all the costs. It's, we're finding that it's going to be beneficial for every department. So we would like to roll that out to every department the next year. I think once departments see it, our goal is to try to use it for this next budget process. And once the departments see it and see how interactive it is, you know, they'll understand the buy-in and how important it is and what information is at their fingertips now.
So correct.
And under current city IT policy, when it goes across multiple departments like this, the second year and all future years will fall under the IT budget, which is broke out to all the departments under the interfund agreement.
Okay. So just from what I'm gathering and from my knowledge of this is that it does more than just budget.
Correct.
So like utility billing and things of that nature, right? So are we, are we only looking at this solely for the budgeting and grants? Or are we looking at having a vision to implement this further into actual financial management? Because having something that would help us with projections for investments and help us with market analysis, cost analysis, things of that nature would be fantastic too.
Correct. And I think this initial, you always have to, you never go in big, right? It's not a go big or go home. This is, you need to prove the process. So we are looking at the budgeting and the Act for and the grants to basically show what it can do to make sure it's a good fit for what we need. And then you have to get buy-in from each department. So it's not a, it's not trying to force departments that you have to do it this way. We want to show and prove that this is going to be a very good system in the future.
So if memory serves me correct, we had had a conversation about another organization that kind of helps with some investments and things like that for the city. So are we looking at rolling out both of these things? Because if this one has the same capabilities.
It's not the same capabilities, the investment.
The investment, just the investment side.
Yes, the investments are to handle, so we were, one person was able, be able, previous CFO was able to make the adjustments for investments and put them in the right department. That is not something that is a hat we know how to wear, but we would have to learn a lot of things. So it's two different things to roll out. So they're going to manage, that's their expertise, is to manage the investments.
Right, so my question, tying them together though, is this, is this something that we could do? Will they fit together?
They will fit together because it's going to go, they're going to give you their own, we're going to get reports from them that will be a different dashboard, but all that information is also going to be in the budget and the information that you receive on a monthly basis.
So we have no intention of breaking ties with the company that we have doing the investments right now because they're actually physically doing that. This is a reporting
Right.
software, it will have nothing to do with the actual investments themselves.
But the information from the investments will be in here.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Nichols.
Excuse me, on the cost here, can you explain the difference between software and professional services? Professional services, looks like it applies only in the first year.
That's the implementation cost, so it happens the first year. And then the software column is the annual subscription.
Okay, got it. Perfect, thank you.
Implementation is time-consuming, it's chart of accounts, it's a lot of stuff, you have to double-check a lot of things. So any software purchase that you get, the implementation cost is pretty significant for that.
And this will fully merge with our general accounting and other software systems we currently have?
Typically had other clients who integrated. Typically had other clients who integrated the exact system around with this. And they showed us those clients.
Great, thank you.
Councilman Bates.
Two questions. One, with that implementation, are we thinking, would we be taking past budget data? Or are we just moving forward?
To be determined. I am not quite sure I have an answer on that yet. It depends on the implementation that we have. Whether or not we have all the information saved for the next budget cycle or not, I do not have an answer, but I could get an answer for you.
Okay. And then back during our budget development meetings earlier this year, I asked a question. I was, I have a concern about our interfund transfers and our police department has had, that's where I noticed it. I think everybody's seen it, that interfund transfers have grown significantly year to year. And when I asked about why, I was told that we don't know exactly why. We don't fully understand. Would this help clear up that confusion internally?
Yeah, so based on the conversation we had, I don't remember which workshop it was. One of the tasks I have is to look at interfund and figure out the whys, the wherefores. So I actually have dug into those and figured out how stuff was assessed. Now it's the best thing moving forward. And using this dashboard, it's going to give you some of the detail that you are asking for for interfund to make it more transparent on where those charges are coming from.
Including our department heads? They'll understand what they're actually paying for.
Absolutely. This is going to be some training for departments. This is going to be some training for, I really think it's going to be, it might be a little tough at first, but I think if we all work together and do the training, it's going to really make the budgeting process not so lengthy, is the hope.
Yeah, well, thank you, Chantel. I appreciate all the work you've done.
I don't think those interfund transfers, and I don't want to chase a rabbit down a hole, but I don't think those interfund transfers are as surprising to all of the department heads when it's an increase. I can answer, part of the increase for the police, they've seen a very high increase over the last few years, but they've also more than doubled their vehicles. And so when you do more than double your vehicles, then all of a sudden, your expenses are going to go up. And so it shouldn't be a shock to anybody over there that it's gone up.
But this will help with some transparency.
This will help with, this should help with a lot of that stuff.
So I've met with some of the, not all the departments. I'm only one person. But just to be able to make sure we have an understanding of what interfund is, what they're understanding. And so we've had some good discussions on the direction we need to go. It will not be perfect this next year, but at least we're stepping in the right direction where everybody's going to be on the same page and understand.
Yeah. Councilmember Nichols.
So does the finance department have the $218,000 in its budget now to pay for this?
Yes, we currently have $343,000 in our reserve.
Okay, thank you.
So we'll be looking at a budget amendment in December and this will be part of that budget amendment to use those reserve amounts.
I feel that strongly about it where I kind of feel like it's a good move. It's a very financially sound move for finance department to use their reserves to make things more efficient and make it available.
Okay, any other questions? Councilmember Mangum.
This year, this coming up year, the budget, smooth. We love the service. The system's great. Kobe's over here killing it still from three, just doing her thing, right? So we love the platform. We decide to roll out more of these capabilities. Is there another, is there an increase in cost to roll out that implementation-wise? Or is it a part of what we're already getting?
It would cost per module. But as you understand, if you add a module that we already maybe have in place, you cut back costs. You're almost going to wash your costs. Not exactly, don't take my word for it. But you understand what I mean. So if you bring on another module that we maybe have in place, then you're just, the cost is going to go from what we currently have to whatever the new is.
You also start to get bundling deals.
Okay.
The more you bring on, they give you discounts.
So with the implementation or the use of AI in here, are there any issues where AI might mess up a number, invert something or...
Very limited. It defaults to off. You turn it on and it will help you narrate or analyze some of the financials. But it's not going to like post anything. You know, it's for you to help you understand what the visuals are telling you, things like that.
So from a public transparency standpoint, is there a place where we can upload like certain policies or procedures or statutes in this software? So where people are looking, they're like, oh, this follows or doesn't follow the policy for how this was spent or allocated or whatever?
Yeah, it's very customizable. Maybe we should look at Durango's too. Because I think they put a lot of extra...
And one other thing in the budgeting process is there, you know, how each department kind of brings, I'm going to say, lack of a better word, their wish list. There's also the ability to ask for that so you guys can have everything in one place on which department. Because sometimes it's hard to remember what departments ask for. So this would make it a consolidated area where you can see what the asks are for the year.
And each, in one of the examples we looked at, each department that had their page, they were also able to customize it to say, you know, this meets comprehensive plan goal XYZ and show kind of how their either capital projects or budget projects were achieving those goals. And they also allowed for some public engagement. So the Durango one may have this, but it said, you know, it was like a survey out to the public. If you had $500, you know, where would you spend it and break it up amongst city budget items? And so there's a lot of customization here and things you can do to help with goal planning or addressing, yeah, wish list items or comprehensive planning. So it's got a lot of opportunity for that public engagement transparency.
So this is some of the extra stuff they added to theirs. They have a message from the city manager, you know, and I think they have the appendix and associated policies. That's kind of what you were talking about. Very custom what you want to put in this.
It looks like they're just linking it back to documents and stuff that you have, they have on their webpage. But it's a single link, so the customer would be able to find it much quicker than going out and searching for it.
And just to note, we did involve, legal has looked at the contract. We involved IT. They got a, you know, snapshot of stuff after all of our digging. They did come in and get an overview on what this was and make sure they were comfortable, so.
Super, thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. Then I need to catch up here.
We're done.
We're done, all right. So, all right, Murphy timing for me. Looks like it's Agenda Item 6, Council Advisory Board Updates. This time it's been set aside for the mayor and council members to give an update regarding recent advisory board activities. All right then, where did we start last time?
You're on the wrong agenda.
What's that?
I'm on the wrong agenda?
No, 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 not you.
You are.
I started with Rick. The last, yeah, we just did that.
It changed.
What changed?
That was taken off the agenda.
What, Agenda Item 6?
Agenda Item 6 is adjourned.
Okay, well, it showed on mine, so we will, if it's only on mine, then it's not on everybody else's, so.
It's on the printed copy?
No, no, not this.
It's not online, okay. So, well, guess what? You don't have to give us a report. I will say this though, before we adjourn, the mayor's youth advisory council is having a central needs drive next Saturday. And it will be, we will be over at the police annex over by the Fred Meyers. And so if you would like to, you're more than welcome to come and join us and/or be there and bring some stuff over.
When did you say it was?
Next Saturday.
This Saturday or this?
Not the 15th, the 20, whatever it is. Okay, thank you then with that. Thank you very much, council. With that, we are adjourned.
All right.